I brought my backpack, so it was fourteen hours. Normally it's twelve hours. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The Council thanks you for being a part of our city government. An agenda package is available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pascal-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the City Council meetings are temporarily being held remotely and are accessible through GoToWebinar. These virtual meetings will continue through April and be extended if need be. This directive was issued on March twenty-third by Governor Inslee and was clarified by the Governor's Proclamation Number Twenty-28 that made temporary changes to Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting is being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel One-Ninety-One on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This meeting is also live via the GoToWebinar link on the agenda. And lastly, for those individuals listening in, may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda via GoToWebinar, the city's Pasco's Facebook page, or by emailing the city managers directly. So with that, just want to let everybody know we're here, still practicing our social distancing. Have our masks here, only taking them off for the meeting, and we have our disinfectants and taking all the precautions that we should be taking during this time. And with that, I would like to have a roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarado.
Present.
Ms. Barajas.
Present.
Mr. Maloney. Mr. Maloney.
Present.
Mr. Martinez.
Present.
Mr. Milm.
Present.
Ms. Roach.
Present.
And Mr. Serrano.
Here.
Seven here, ready to go.
Thank you, and thanks everyone for participating and being here with us tonight. With that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And next, we'll go to the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by Council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular Agenda and considered separately. So what we have for four A Consent Agenda, we have approval of meeting minutes to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council Remote Meeting held on April twentieth, two thousand twenty. Four B Bills and Communications, to approve claims in the total amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. And that's the two items on the Consent Agenda. So with that, is there anybody, or Blanche, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely. I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Thank you, Councilmember Barajas. There's been a motion to move and approve the Consent Agenda as read. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Serrano, Councilmember Serrano. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Serrano.
I've lost sound from council chambers. I don't know if anyone else has.
Mr. Serrano, can you hear me now?
Mr. Serrano is, can't hear us, but we can hear him.
Okay, yeah, I vote aye, yes.
Mr. Alvarado.
Are you asking me for a vote, or, sorry, you went blank on me there first. Yeah, my vote is in favor of that, sorry.
Mr. Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Maloney.
Yes.
Mr. Milne.
Yes.
Ms. Roach.
Yes.
Ms. Barajas.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Okay, the vote passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Councilmembers. Next, we'll go to Proclamations and Acknowledgements, none listed. And number six, Reports from Committees and/or Officers. Does any Councilmembers have any reports they would like to share tonight?
This is Serrano. I did meet with the Hanford Area Economic Advisory Investment Fund Committee, and we've passed several abeyances to several loans that we have out to the private parties, given this uncertain time. So that's the most recent activity, and obviously trying to lend money right now is a little bit more iffy. So we're just doing our best to maintain those funds and be good stewards of the public money. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Anybody else? If not, I'll go ahead and report that I've been continuing to attend the continuity of operations meetings with our staff and everybody involved, all the local agencies. We actually have three meetings a week that I've been attending weekly and just continuing to get reports from the local agencies on how they're moving forward and what they're hearing out in the public. And for the most part, it's been pretty continuous. The numbers have kind of gone up a little bit, obviously, because of the Tyson situation. But the health districts are working diligently to try to control that and try to stay on top of that and ensure that those folks that are affected are following the protocols for that situation. Also want to thank everybody who's involved in the continuity of operations and their reports are vital to each and every one of us that are in those meetings and just continuing to work with the public and getting their input. I know that the public, as we all know, are, most of them are, very anxiously waiting to open their doors again and try to get their lives back to normal somewhat, under the circumstances. But working hard to ensure that we maintain within our limits and the emergency order that's been assigned to us. So it's kind of what we've been working with, a lot of individuals we've had discussions with and just trying to hear them out and, again, you know, just communicating with the Governor's Representative Salvador Salazar to ensure that we are being heard and we're doing everything we can to just move this forward in the safest manner possible. So with that, is there anybody else? I can't see you directly, so I just want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to report if they have something. All right, thank you. Next, we'll go to the General Fund Monthly Report. Is Richa, is Richa on board today?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Richa. Is there anything you'd like to report?
Evening, Mayor and Council. You will see some projections on the sales tax, the criminal justice, and the public safety tax, as well as some of the expected reduction on our gaming taxes on the report as well. Of course, this is preliminary numbers, and we're not quite sure how things are going to pan out. But on a positive note, Council has done a really good job in the last decade or so ramping up the reserves for General Fund. And so we do, we're not worried about cash flow, and we're hoping that it will, that our revenues will stay stable. But we do have healthy reserves in General Fund and not anything that I'm concerned about at this point. And just want to reiterate that these are preliminary numbers and projections are a little bit difficult right now because we do not know the length of this emergency as well as the economy and consumer confidence at this point. So that is all I have to add to the report.
Thank you, Ms. Igdele. Any Councilmembers have any comments?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
So my question is regarding the two-point-three million dollars in pass-through funding from the Federal Cares Act. I understand that we can't use that money to supplement the revenue portion that we know we're going to take, you know, a very large hit on as we've asked so much from our business owners. But what I guess what I'm curious about is, do we have any sort of idea of what our increased expenses are that may be somewhat mitigated by that? I'm very much, I'm very much interested in seeing what that money we can free up for the business community in terms of loans and grants, if possible. And I know there's no full answers expected tonight, but I just was hoping to get a little sense of what we expect to be able to do with that two-point-three million.
There are several requirements floating around, and we have asked some of our partners, like MRSC and AWC, to give us a little bit better picture of exactly what these requirements are. Some that we're seeing from the federal government, and this is a flow-through. So usually, whatever the granting agency, the original funding agency requires, the requirements flow through with that money. And what we're seeing there is essentially tracking, like any other grant, requiring cost backup. So essentially, whatever you incurred, that is a reimbursement that we're going, that we would be receiving. However, we're still waiting through that and hoping that it's a little bit more. We are not sure at this point, unfortunately, but we are working towards getting a clearer idea of where exactly those funds can be used. The way that I'm reading it right now, unfortunately, it would not be open for us to distribute it further as grants. But we're hopeful that there will be more clarity moving forward. So I can report that back to you either next week or the week after.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Is there an opportunity through the CDBG this year to do some small business loan or raise stuff for small business owners?
We did, we did get, this is Dave Zabel, and good evening, Mayor and Council. We did get a few thousand, few hundred thousand dollars, actually, for CDBG reimbursement or distribution. And we have probably a little bit more flexibility, which is saying a lot, to talk about CDBG in light of having flexibility. But I want to turn it over to Rick White for a few minutes to discuss that. There's a process we need to go through to allocate those that certainly will involve the Council. So, Rick, I know you're on.
Yes, thank you. We're still finding out the details as each day comes. But we received approximately four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in a grant called CDBG Cares. What we anticipate recommending to Council is that that four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars be used for small business assistance, parroting a program that Richland has set up with their CDBG funds. We have approximately five-hundred thousand dollars in home consortium funds. Actually, each of the tri-cities has approximately five-hundred thousand in home consortium funds. And we're anticipating recommending to Council that we use those for rental assistance and utility payment assistance. So we have about a million dollars, and the recommendation from staff, at least at this point, is to use half for residential assistance and then the other half for small business assistance. And Council will be seeing that in an upcoming agenda report on May eleventh.
Thank you.
Thank you for that information. And I have a question about just deadline dates for that for business owners who want to apply for it. Did you mention that? My internet was in connection here.
No, no, there's, no, there's no deadline right now. We'll have that information for Council, though. Now, I don't want to lead anybody astray. There's two processes going on now. We just opened up our two thousand and twenty-one allocation process, which is completely different than this emergency funding. So the normal block grant allocation is starting now for Council consideration later in the summer. And that's separate from the CDBG Cares money and this emergency use of the home consortium money that's been building up over the last few years.
Thank you, Mr.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Roach and Mr. White. Appreciate it. If there's nobody, no other comments or questions, we're going to move right along to number seven, Hearings and Council Actions on Ordinances and Resolutions relating thereto. Seven A, we have an alley vacation, vacating east-west alley in Platt of Sunny Acres. Mr. White, would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This alley vacation is located at the southwest corner of Court Street and Twenty-Sixth Avenue. The applicant intends to construct a series of retail buildings, possibly including some restaurants on pad sites. The public hearing was originally set for tonight, and staff is recommending continuing this public hearing until May eighteenth so that we can fully comply with the Open Public Meeting Act restrictions that Mayor Martinez described earlier in the meeting. It's been fully vetted through all staff, and we don't see any concerns with the alley. It was an original question of possible additional right-of-way being necessary, particularly at the corner, the northeast corner of the property for the turning radius there. But when we get a final site design, that determination will be made by our engineering staff.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any comments? Anybody would like to share? If not, I would like to entertain, or I would ask if anybody would like to entertain a motion?
I can, I can say the motion. I moved any of the public meeting to May eighteen, two thousand and twenty, to consider the notice of intent to annex property located near the corner of West Court Street and Harris Road due to the COVID-nineteen restrictions mandated by the Governor Inslee's Proclamation Number Twenty-28.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. And that's to move to continue the public hearing.
I'm sorry for interrupting, Mayor. Did I understand the motion to reference a notice of intent for annexation?
That was the, you are correct. That was ten A. Read the wrong one, sorry.
No, we're at seven, seven A.
Yes. I take that back. I have a motion for seven A, alley vacation. Motion to continue the public hearing set in accordance to Resolution Number Three-Nine-Four-Five to May eighteen, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM concerning the vacation of the east-west alley in the Platt of Sunny Acres.
Okay, great.
And this is Roach, and I will second it.
All right, so there's been a motion to continue the public hearing set in accordance with the Resolution Number Thirty-Nine-Four-Five to May eighteen, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM concerning the vacation of the east-west alley in the Platt of Sunny Acres. And it's been seconded by Councilwoman Roach. Is that correct? Was that you, Councilwoman Roach?
That is correct.
Yep. All right. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so next we go to ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, and there's none. And unfinished business, there's none to speak of. And now we have, we go down to number ten, new business. So we have SG Land Management LLC Harris Road Annexation. Let's see, we have Mr. White. Would you like to elaborate on this one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. At the first Council meeting in April, the date was set for tonight to decide on acceptance of an annexation request, a petition, intent to petition to annex. It involves property in the county island that's located just south of Harris Road, immediately west of the bridge over the river at Interstate One-Eighty-Two. Again, staff is recommending continuum, continuing this item to the May eighteenth meeting to fully comply with the Open Public Meeting Act restrictions. And then just a little more detail on this item. Originally, back in April, staff had indicated that it was intending to recommend delaying the annexation until the completion of the comprehensive plan. Some work has occurred with options to both delay the annexation and accept the annexation. And based on the timelines developed, I've concluded that there isn't any appreciable difference in delaying the annexation. And it will provide the applicant some time to accomplish some preliminary work related to a potential development agreement that would be in the city's best interest to establish the parameters that utilities will be extended to that county island. So a lot can be done prior to the comprehensive plan being finalized and fully adopted by Council. So when we do come back on May eighteen, two weeks from now, we'll be recommending that City Council accept this annexation and move forward with the annexation process.
Good. Glad to hear that, Mr. White. Anybody have a comment?
This is Councilmember Serrano. I just want to thank staff. I appreciate that, Mr. White. I know we had a handful of questions list when it was presented a couple of weeks back, and it sounds like you and your staff have really beaten the road. So again, I really appreciate when we, when we as Councilmembers hear that staff is working with, whether it's land developers, other business owners, or general public members to meet their needs. So kudos to you and your team. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Serrano, for that comment. Mrs. Blanche, would you like to entertain a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. Now we have the correct one. Motion.
Yeah, it's ten A.
I moved to the public meeting to May eighteen, two thousand and twenty, to consider the notice of intent to annex property located near the corner of West Court Street and Harris Road due to the COVID-nineteen restrictions mandated by Governor Inslee's Proclamation Number Twenty-28.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
We'll let Alvarado get this one.
Okay, so.
Well, I'll second that. Alvarado.
Okay, so it's been seconded by Mr. Alvarado. So is this, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move right along to ten B, bid award, Ninth and Washington Lift Station and South Midland Lift Station Improvement. Mr. Warley, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing great, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and good evening, Councilmembers. Tonight, we're looking at the bid award for some sewer lift station work. We have two lift stations that need some attention. Our Ninth and Washington Lift Station has some equipment in it that is older and outdated, needs to be replaced. There's some isolation valves, new flow meter, access hatch improvements, and that kind of stuff. And then our Maitland Lift Station, we need to install a smaller pump in it to accommodate some of the lower flows that we get, and it makes the lift station operate more efficiently. We put the bid out. We've got three successful bidders. And we would like to recommend the award go to CNE Trenching. They had the lowest bid for the combined of both schedules A and B. And the bids were, and the project is within the budget that was estimated. And the money to cover this project will come from the twenty-seventeen bond funds that were received back in two thousand and seventeen. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warley. I'd just like to comment that I was very pleased to see the bid that came in. If I'm not mistaken, it was just slightly under the engineering report, engineering estimation. But I was very pleased to see CNE be awarded this. They're a local company, and they were quite a bit more affordable than at least one of the three. So anyway, I want to thank you for that. Anybody have any other comments about the bid award? If none, Ms. Blanche, would you like to entertain a motion, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to award the bid for construction of the Ninth and Washington and South Midland Lift Station improvements to CNE Trenching LLC in the amount of six-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-two and ninety-six cents, including Washington State sales tax, and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
This is Councilmember Maloney. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Maloney with a second. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody oppose? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for that, Council. We'll move right on to number eleven, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel, would you like to begin, or is there anybody else that has something they'd like to share in the miscellaneous discussion?
There's just one thing that I'd like to share. This is Councilmember Roach. And that is that, you know, unfortunately, in Pasco, we have a family that the family member worked at Tyson and lived with, you know, four other family members, husband, wife, kid, aunt, and grandma. And Grandma, the husband, who was a Tyson employee, he was positive for COVID-nineteen. The whole family ended up getting it, presumptive positive. But the Grandma just passed away on Saturday. And so that is a Pasco resident that we have, and so we're really seeing the real effect of, you know, that situation at Tyson with employees and the rip-lot effect and how it affects us here in our city and our residents. And so just something I wanted to bring up, it's been, you know, really sad and affected that family greatly and especially because they are perceiving it as, you know, a preventable death. It could have been prevented had safety measures been put into place in that workplace early enough. So I just wanted to share that because I thought that was, you know, something that we need to know. I know that, you know, our health district doesn't update deaths on the weekend. They have that posted on their website, and so because there was no death certificate given over the weekend, it's not something that'll show up until either today or tomorrow. So, I mean, I just, you know, my heart goes out to that family and their great loss that they had.
Thank you, Mrs. Roach. We share your heartfelt feelings, and I, my heart goes out to the family as well. Yeah, it's a sad situation, and I just pray for a quick emotional recovery for the family and that they can get through this. Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to share under miscellaneous before I hand it over to Mr. Zabel? If not, I would just like to mention a couple of things under miscellaneous. I'm going to ask the community and anybody who's watching this to please encourage others to complete their census. If I'm not mistaken, we're about fifty-five percent in Franklin County. And although we may think we have some time, I just want to encourage everybody to please go and fill out your census. It only takes minutes. And then when you learn how to do it, I know that my wife got in the computer, she did it, and she helped out a lot of people get it done. So I'm going to encourage everybody to please complete the census. It's going to benefit everybody in our community, and it's going to be a, it's just, it's just not worth it to not complete it for our whole community's sake. The other thing I'd like to mention, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and the reason I'm And the reason I'm bringing that up today is because I think because of this pandemic, I I believe there's a very, very much shared feeling that parents realize how hard it is to be an educator as well as a parent. Obviously, being a parent takes a lot of work, but it is Teacher Appreciation Week. And so shout out to all the teachers in the Pasco School District and all of the Tri-Cities. Appreciate everything you do and I, I want to say that I think there's very much an appreciation that has come about with this pandemic about what you actually do for our children. And just want to encourage teachers that it's not just how much you know, but it's how much you care that these kids will never, never, ever forget. And I hold very deeply many memories of the of the teachers that provided me so much knowledge and just the ability to to succeed in life. And I appreciate every one of the teachers that that are out there and 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 certified staff and everybody involved in educating our children. So thank you very much for that. And then just one quick announcement, I want to thank Blanch for covering for me two weeks ago. I am a granddaddy for the third time and I'm very proud and the baby's healthy. And boy, I tell you what, when when the load comes on and and you get the heat for all the things going on with this pandemic and then you see this little baby and if it wasn't for those type of things, it would be very tough to live life and go through life without that. So anyway, just wanted to just share my gratitude for a very healthy baby and and for you guys, excusing my absence last week. So thank you for that and I'll just turn that right on over to Mr. Zabel.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, before you jump to Mr. Zabel, one quick thing. I'm looking on the Maya Angelou's website and it looks, or I guess their class dojo. And it looks like the Maya staff is having a parade through, I'm guessing, the general neighborhood. So for those who live in the area of Maya Angelou, Friday, the eighth, starting at twelve thirty, the teachers are going to have a parade. So based on what you just said, Mr. Mayor, I encourage anyone who's available at that time to be out, either with signage or or something, to at least acknowledge those teachers who, like you said, give a lot to our children. And obviously, right now, they're going through a very unique time for themselves. So again, thank you to the teachers, as you said, and just a reminder of that.
Thank you, Mr.
And not, and not to cut Mr. Zabel off again, but there was one other thing that I remembered. This is Councilmember Roach. I had to, I was asked to put in a plug about All in Tri-Cities. It's a pretty simple effort happening with the Tri-Cities, but in Franklin County. Just a diverse group of local leaders who have from, you know, public and private sector identified the the key nonprofits that have been carrying a lot of the load of helping those that are affected by the coronavirus. People, places like Boys and Girls Club that are still providing childcare, places like Meals on Wheels and the Tri-City Food Bank, among others, the Grace Clinic, for example, for healthcare. And so they have a website called AllinTriCities.org. They have started fundraising and social media. And so if you need services, it's a place to go. If you have the ability to donate, it's also a place to go and donate. I also know that United Way has been weekly giving out three thousand dollar grants to local, local nonprofits to address this pandemic here. Been a grant reviewer for them each Friday and and just overwhelmed by the generosity that we have in our community to help people out who are struggling right now. So if you have a chance, All in Tri-Cities. Thanks.
I thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Anybody else? I know Dave has probably three or four different subjects that he's going to touch on tonight. So if there's nobody else, then Mr. Zabel, go ahead, please.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to forego the continuous operations discussion tonight because I do have actually five different items and a couple of presentations to provide counsel on some things that have been kind of circulating around. First of all, though, I want to talk a little bit about Governor Enzley's press conference last Friday and his release of Safe Start Washington, which is a four-part or a four-phase reopening of Washington State and and businesses. I think folks heard about that certainly on Friday and and throughout the weekend. We continue to hear about it, new things through the weekend. Matter of fact, just a few minutes ago, we received email from the Governor's Office regarding extension of OPMA, Open Public Meetings Act waivers that he put in effect a few weeks back through May thirty-first. So another month of OPMA waivers, essentially status quo. As far as the opening of the of the society, I guess, and in commerce, he's indicated we'll be looking at different regions of the state. And it's going to be depending on how those areas are performing and their level of readiness and and capabilities. So the four main areas and and some of you may have already read this document or or know a little bit, have a good outline of what the Governor presented, but healthcare system readiness, how many beds, how many ICU beds, ventilators, things like that with respect to our our population. How much capacity for testing do we have available? What is, how robust of a testing system do we have? How many different locations? Sufficient supply, which right now, nobody has a sufficient supply of swabs and things like that. Case and contact investigators, Council, Councilmember Roach brought this up a few weeks ago, early on before a lot of us heard contact tracers. And that's been something I think everybody's become familiar with over the last month. And so our our ability to to trace and to follow up on cases that are discovered is going to be a factor on which we will be judged as a county in terms of how soon we move from the different phases that the Governor's laid out. And then our ability to protect high-risk populations, number of outbreaks, for instance, in long-term care facilities, demographic data, cases on hospitalizations and deaths related to COVID, et cetera. In every phase, we're we're going to be expected to continue with guidance for individuals about physical distancing and and wearing masks and sanitation and and stay home if sick, those kind of things. And for employers, there's also obligations on their part in in terms of enforcing physical distancing as part of their business plan, whether that's a restaurant. And you'll note in, as we go through the, as you can look through the schedule, you will note the different levels of activity at some of these different businesses. Like phase, I think it's phase two or three, restaurants are allowed at fifty percent capacity. Never easy to run a business designed to run at a hundred percent capacity to make a profit, to run at fifty percent. But that's where we're at and part of that's about keeping people apart. And it's about protecting your employees as well as the public that are that are going to be using your establishment. So phase one is what we're in right now. So we did see some some reopening. Matter of fact, we'd seen some reopening on golf and hiking and and hunting and fishing earlier. We are going to see phase two no sooner than three weeks. And the three weeks between phases, a little bit more information on that, that's kind of buried a little bit in the details. The thinking behind the three weeks between phases has to has to do with the cycle, the fourteen-day cycle we've been hearing about since COVID first started rearing its ugly head in our country. And then another week to kind of evaluate that data. So we, the the folks want to see, the scientists that are assisting the Governor on this, they want to see a full cycle of potential start-to-finish disease. And then a week of that data, a week to crunch it and make some decisions on whether or ready not to move to the next phase. So minimum of three weeks between phases, which puts us out, you know, into July. Phase two, you know, start to see a lot more opening of personal services, haircuts, you know, be one thing that I think a lot of folks are looking forward to. Phase three is government, public-facing government services, which means that's when our counters and our doors can start to open up is in phase three. So we're still a little ways off from being able to open up City Hall and and open up our council meetings, things like that. So that's, I know that's probably difficult for for most folks to to hear, but that's kind of where we're at on that. And then phase four is basically a resumption of some level of normalcy with still the physical distancing and and additional sanitation efforts and and things like that. So it's, it's going to be a long process that'll take up a good chunk of the next several weeks. So or next couple of months, actually. So there are, there are some processes for county variances. And this is a decision that ultimately is going to be made a kind of a combination of the county board of commissioners, the health district, public health official, and then state officials, Department of Health and others that will be evaluating it. But we can petition for additional or, yeah, additional criteria which could include cases per capita. I I think folks had heard about the ten, I think, ten or eleven counties that that were able to move to to phase two. And they were able to move to phase two because they'd really only had one, one or less case of COVID identified in their county in the previous three weeks. Those are small counties. So trying to use a one standard on a county of a hundred thousand compared to a county of twenty thousand may not entirely seem fair. Or a larger county like King County, you know, or Snohomish or Pierce. So there there's some opportunities to to be able to evaluate those criteria in more of a weighted average. I think we're going to probably learn a lot more about that in the next couple of weeks as people start to dig into the plan and and look at how they're performing on a percentage basis compared, you know, comparatively to other other counties and other agencies and maybe have a little bit more flexibility than what you see currently in the plan. So a couple of things that have come up while we've had these discussions over the last week. One, we have a number of businesses that will be able to open. And then in phase two, we'll have some more. There's still going to be businesses that can't open. And so what do we do with those businesses that maybe are opening prematurely? Wanted to have, invite the police chief to kind of walk through. He and I had a discussion last week and he'd already been working on a procedure for, in a policy for the department and he's going to kind of walk us through what that policy is. He coordinated very closely with the County Prosecutor's Office in this as well as the majority of the other law enforcement agencies in the in the Tri-Cities area. So with that, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Mayor and council members, as well as the community that might be listening. We've taken a proactive approach early on in this, in this endeavor as the proclamations came out to ensure that we were educating and working closely with the community for cooperation at the end of, public safety is the is the ultimate goal here. As the Governor starts to open the state back up, we wanted to be in a position to have a uniformed response as these businesses are phased in. There could be some question about which ones are coming online at which times. So I worked closely, our office, with the Franklin County Prosecutor, who ultimately has the legal review. And if there were any violations, that's that's who would charge those on on what the police department would would look like from an investigative standpoint. So we felt it was probably best to take a team of officers, and we've done that, and provide specific training to them along with guidance from the from the county prosecutor and develop a, you know, a team to evaluate these emergency order and proclamations and review those that are coming in, document those complaints, and then get them to the to the county prosecutor for final review and and determination. Our first step for any complaints that come in is to refer them to the Regulatory Commission, the state Regulatory Commission, that might govern that business. That's the process across the state and they have the first opportunity to answer questions and educate the specific business on when to open, how to open, and what that might look like. If there's continued confusion or there's a thought that it maybe shouldn't be opened and we continue to get, and we get additional complaints, that will be assigned to this specific team. That team will then make contact with that business, primarily via phone contact, discuss with the proprietor, manager, owner of that business about their open, do they understand the proclamation? And then from there, ensure we are providing education materials. That's the first step. And then making sure that if they are open, that they're following the best safety precautions out there. For example, social distancing, masks, et cetera. That's really the key is public safety. From there, all those reports will be completed and sent to the Franklin County Prosecutor, who will triage those like he would many complaints that we get. This, from from there, the process is just like other other complaints or criminal matters that we that we might have. Couple of things that that we've done. We do have on the team a Spanish speaker. The supervisor that oversees that that team is also a Spanish speaker. So he'll be able to help triage many of those complaints that come in that might have some language barriers. And then from there, they will work through our protocol that we that we have put in place. Dave, did I answer most of those for you?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Chief. I think that was helpful. Are there any, council may have any questions you'd want to ask the chief or myself about this particular topic?
This is Councilmember Serrano. I just want to say thank you, Chief, for putting that together. I certainly appreciate that you've worked with the county prosecutor. As you mentioned, it sounds like he has the primary authority to make any charges, if any. I think one thing that that that's very important that we get across the line is that through this process, both the prosecutor and the Pasco PD have the ability to exercise enforcement discretion. Is that correct? In other word, to charge or not to charge, based on essentially kind of the facts of the violation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And if you remember when this first went into effect, the first order, oh, middle or end of March, our our posture hasn't changed. And our posture back when that this came out was to be the, to have the calm demeanor, be the calm government voice out there and ensure public safety, ensure that we were educating the public first. The prosecutor has asked that we take these complaints, document them, and allow him to actually do the the charging. There is some, there is some legal analysis to each of these that's going to need to be vetted. And we don't want our officers making those determinations in the field without all of the information available to them. So that's where the prosecutor and I have come up with this determination that his office will make any charging and not us.
I greatly appreciate that and I appreciate the nuance that you lay there. You know, I I've heard from several residents that want to open and, you know, ultimately, it it is a legal analysis. It's not necessarily something for Pasco PD or the county sheriff or, you know, any of the Tri-Cities police departments to handle. So I appreciate your efforts. Do you know, like, what type of caseload you're seeing on this? Has there been much traffic or interest or or concerns since you've established this protocol?
So I I didn't have them pull all the calls, but it's been very few of complaints. We've had a few nickel and dime complaints over the last five or six weeks. I did have them pull all calls since the Governor put his new proclamation or extended his proclamation as of Friday. So we've had no complaints as of Friday through through today.
Excellent. Thank you. And I certainly appreciate our citizens kind of working well together and trying to, you know, maintain safe protocols and and doing our best to continue moving forward. So again, thank you, Chief Ross, and your team.
Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, is there any other questions, Chief? I counsel, okay, so if there are none, another topic I wanted to touch on real quick and see attorney's going to help me with this. But during this time, there's been a lot of reliance on takeout. I mean, that's folks' only option to get to get food out is takeout. People need to eat and I think our local restaurants. People need to eat, and I think our local restaurants are appreciating and enjoying the support from the community and want to continue doing that. One of the elements of takeout in many cases is food delivery service and the commission associated with that. I'm not entirely familiar with that myself, but I know it's utilized a lot as we've frequented restaurants to go pick up takeout as part of our employee supporter restaurant lunch program. You know, we've seen Grubhub and Uber Eats and and folks like that there to pick up pick up food. So I know some of the council, maybe all of you, have received communications from restaurant owners concerned about the level of that commission and wanted to bring that up because I know that's a topic a couple of you communicated to me about. And I want to kind of toss it over to our city attorney, Eric Ferguson, for a few minutes to discuss a little bit the regulation and what kind of flexibility council may have in this regard. And then I probably had a couple of comments I wanted to to I had a couple of council I wanted to make as well on potential unintended consequences. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric for a minute.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Zabel. Appreciate that. Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that are going on with regard to limiting some of the issues with regard to delivery service fees. There's been kind of a trend and it seems to be gaining some steam in some larger cities. The most notable for us, obviously, is the city of Seattle. They recently, excuse me, as recently as just a few days ago, passed a an emergency ordinance, which basically is, excuse me, a civil order, which is essentially going to have the same effect as a temporary ordinance. And essentially what it's going to say is that based on their proclamation of emergency that they need to institute some emergency procedures to protect property and and health. That's essentially the the basis that they're they're using. And it would be temporary in nature and it would go on as long as the emergency proclamation is in effect. But essentially what it would do is or what theirs what their temporary order does is it does three things. It limits the amount, the percentage amount that people can be charged, restaurant owners can be charged for delivering, for engaging in the delivery service fees or delivery service businesses. It also limits the the ability of the food delivery providers. It limits their ability to then take the lost revenue and then lower the fees or the, I guess, their independent contractors. So it would be the compensation that they give their independent contractors for for being available for this particular business activity. And the last thing it does is it also allows them to prevent these companies from only focusing on certain areas that they feel are more profitable versus other areas throughout the city. So they need to be able to maintain their ability to to deliver from all points in the city. So be available for that. They can't essentially close off anything. So it is gaining some steam. It looks like New York and LA are also looking at these types of things. Obviously, this has been met with some some consternation from some of the folks that provide these services. So yeah, I just kind of wanted to give a little bit. It does appear that in this particular situation, I wouldn't I wouldn't be as comfortable in a normal environment recommending that that something like this would be completely legal to the degree that it's it's been put forth. But in this kind of unusual situation that we're in with regard to the emergency proclamation as the foundation, there's a whole lot more that folks can do to regulate, to protect life and property. And that's essentially what folks are starting to do with regard to these delivery fees. So with that, that be answering any questions?
Before before we get to the questions, if I could just have one observation. And I think we've heard, I I have seen evidence of input from a couple of restaurants. But I know a lot of our restaurants in the in the city are looking for them. And so and a lot of them are relying on these delivery services to deliver their product because they're they don't have a lot of options otherwise. Only so many people are able to perhaps maybe come in and drive. Maybe they're not comfortable doing it. Maybe they're ordering out food because they they just aren't healthy enough to to be able to drive to a to a restaurant or don't have transportation or whatever they whatever it may be. So my my observation I'd make is, you know, it it's easy to take a position that we want to limit it to a certain percentage, whether that's 15% or 20%. The the other edge of that sword might be that we drive away people willing to deliver the food because they can't make money at 15% or 20%. And then our then our restaurants don't have a way to get the food out and it impacts their business. So I don't know, honestly, I don't know what kind of what kind of impact this is having on all of our restaurants. And I'm I'm not quite sure how to go about trying to gauge that other than, you know, maybe I can work with John a little bit and see if we can't do a bit of a unscientific survey and see if we can get a little more input from from more than just the couple we've heard from. But with that, if council has any questions or suggestions, Eric and I are happy to answer those.
Anybody anybody have any comments? I know that what I can share is I I'm really stuck on this myself because as much as I would, you know, it just seems like if we help somebody, somebody else is getting hurt. And I'm not too worried about these big businesses that are, you know, based, big corporations based out of somewhere out of the tri cities. But but these people who are delivering work in in our communities. And if they if they decide to cut them off, then they're going to be out of work as well. So we got to think about that a little bit, I think, unless unless I'm looking at this all wrong. But that's kind of what I see. And but again, I I do want to help our restaurant owners. But I don't know, I guess I would just like to hear if, you know, anybody, any other council members have a comment and see if they would like to look into this any further.
This is Councilmember Alvarado. I'd be comfortable with making a decision on this with some some level of data. So I I would appreciate certainly a a very least a room entry analysis or some some form of survey, as you mentioned, Mr. Zabel. So yeah, that's be some, I think that'd be worth of this conversation.
And this is Serrano. I I will second that. You know, when we got some of the emails, I said, you know, my initial response was makes sense to look into this. I'd be in support of it if we can do this both legally and in a way that's beneficial to the community. And, you know, I'm probably asking a question of city attorney Ferguson that I already know the answer to. But if we were to look at a sliding scale where we retain, say, 30% for chain restaurants, but slid it down for smaller, more independent restaurants, I suspect we wouldn't have that discretion even under the current circumstance. Is that correct?
I would be pretty nervous about that just because that really is going to speak to what we call, obviously, as you're aware, a disparate impact where folks that are similarly situated are going to be being treated differently. I know there is a distinction between Applebee's and and folks who might be a mom and pop shop. But and so I think there's probably a way to make that distinction. But at first blush, we would want to be obviously really careful about how we approach that. But we could certainly look into it.
Right. And I'll say this, I don't I don't want to give that direction because I agree, the disparate impact analysis becomes very, I mean, we're talking about a dual edged sword that's now razor sharp, right? And I wouldn't want to get us in trouble. I guess the general consensus, or at least my opinion, is where we can help those who are hurting, especially those who are local, who have been staples of our community that precede my time here, I would love to do that. But I also don't want to do that and take on additional risk that, you know, whether it's Grubhub or, you know, the delivers themselves or another restaurant finds us somehow disproportionately impacting them. So again, I counsel what I I echo what Councilman Alvarado said as far as little more information would be helpful. I support at least chasing that. Thank you.
Well, I would also like to make another comment myself is that I read into the article that, you know, Seattle has imposed this limitation. And definitely, if we could get some more information, we would definitely want to limit it to a certain timeframe. Because my understanding is is that, you know, if it's, and I think it was 30%, you know, when when maybe 10% of your businesses take out, you can afford to pay that 30%. But when when 50 to 100% of of your businesses now take out, it does make a big difference. So in the event that we want to proceed with this, I would definitely make it a limited time only or during, you know, this time that that the that we're in the phase that only takeout can be given. So I don't know how much longer. I mean, we're talking, you know, the faces could go out till the end of June, you know, for example. So if we did this, we'd want to act on it real quick, I think. Or at least by next week, if we could have a little bit more data and then put a put a limitation on it to only last no more than that time when restaurants would be open up to more than 50% of their capacities or or some situation like that would be kind of the my my comment, kind of one of the things that I would like to look into. So anybody else?
This is Councilwoman Roach, and I do have one thing that I I had read the couple of emails from the McGill's owner, local restaurant Pasco. And they had copied a couple of articles, an example of San Francisco doing this same thing and Seattle that I've heard other council members and Mr. Zabel reference. But what I think I also stuck with me from the most recent article they sent was making a part of the emergency order a requirement that 100% of the tips go to the delivery drivers and also making it illegal and possible for the third party delivery service to reduce the driver's rate pay. I think those are a couple of things that that would be if council goes for this. That's where I would like to see those two things put in place. So that's my two cents on that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Maloney. I guess I would second all the things above. I won't try to repeat any of them. They're all great ideas, and I think I stand by the general consensus that we need to look into this further and see if it fits. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Okay, great.
So we'll move we'll move forward with maybe getting a little bit more information for next week. And then we can, you know, if we're going to move, we need to move on this sooner than later.
Yeah, I will. As we were talking, I I thought check in with the chambers as well and maybe with the Restaurant Association and just see generally across the state what their sense of this is to you.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel.
All right. And then, let's see, wanted to talk a bit about, gosh, we talked about $2.3 million tonight through the CARES Act. And I'm not excited about that, but I'm actually kind of excited that we're going to open up our public restrooms in our parks. You know, that I guess that's a comment on where we are right now. And seeing something normal happen around here is 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 pretty excited. So we've been coordinating with Richland and West Richland and Kennewick on this. We'll be opening May 6th, and our restrooms will be will be open 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. So.
Mr. Zabel, this is Councilwoman Roach, and I just wanted to to say something about this piece in particular. Thank you so much for the work, so so much for the work that you put and that staff has put behind this. And know this is probably seem to people outside of, you know, City Matters is like, well, what difference does it make? I've got a bathroom at home. But the people who work at St. Vincent de Paul's and Ansel Service Center and our day shelters and places that have had to close down. When I read that information and I shared with them that would be able to open those public restrooms up even during the day, starting tomorrow, they were over the moon. You know, just joyful to hear that news and so grateful that, you know, the the people, the poorest members of our residents of our our city are able to access a public restroom and wash their hands. And so it's just, you know, a really basic need that a lot of us don't even have to think about because we have the comfort of our own home. So I really want to say thank you from me and thank you from all of them, all those volunteers who've been waiting to hear that news.
Great. I will. I'll pass that on to appropriate staff. And then one one other item, I think, just to kind of prep the council for the next few meetings. I think probably should expect that as we are going to have to continue on with the stay home and the limitations on council meetings for another month, we have a lot of things that have started to kind of back up that are now necessary to bring forward. So our our trigger point or our threshold is regular and necessary. And we have some deadlines we have to meet. So you're going to probably see upcoming meetings a little bit more robust than they have been since we're we're in this for another month or so from OPMA restrictions. So and with that, I didn't have anything further unless there's questions, I mean.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Mr. Zabel. It was very helpful. Hopefully, the people listening are are getting a little insight of all these different topics. So we'll move, I think, let me go down here. So that was the end of item number 12 miscellaneous discussion. Do we have? Do we have a need for an executive session tonight?
Not this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. So with that, I want to thank all the council members for joining us and anybody who's watching us on on television. We hope that we can keep the good fight and just stay strong and and do what we have to do to be safe and protect our families. You know, many times, and I have to just share this, that I I know it's very difficult and there's nobody who wants to give back in the business the way I would. But one of the things that's just scary, as Councilmember Roach indicated a little earlier, you know, it's when it hits home that it's really going to matter to to the individual. So we just pray for for health and for everybody to do their part. And again, as you're out in public, you know, maintaining a little sanity and understanding you need to get fresh air and go out and do the things you do. But let's stay safe. Let's let's finish the good fight here and and just hope that we can get some some vaccines and the things that we need, the the tools. And our emergency responders, again, thank everyone who's a big part in working diligently in all these in this in these trying times. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. So thank you very much.